Good evening. This eleventh regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Councilmember Blanchard will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Councilman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
Present.
Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the journals for the May twelfth and fifteenth twenty twenty-five meeting proceedings are in members' inboxes.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing none, the journal is adopted. We'll now turn to executive nominations.
EA twenty-five dash zero zero two-six Adler Archer, member Baltimore City Veterans Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero zero two-seven Otto Bolia Buford, member Baltimore City Veterans Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero zero two-eight Kishon Johnson, member Baltimore City Veterans Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero zero two-nine Tiwanda Morton, member Baltimore City Veterans Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero zero three-zero Jeremy Williams, member Baltimore City Veterans Commission.
This nomination has been as- has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero zero three-one Max Grossfield, member Baltimore City Veterans Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero zero three-two Chloe Starcher, member Baltimore City Veterans Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations. That concludes the executive nominations. Now we move on to bills being introduced. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero seven-six Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district. Variance is three-two-two-four Oaken Trolley Terrace. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit into two dwelling units on the property known as thirty-two-twenty-four Oaken Trolley Terrace, as outlined and read on the accompanying plot. Granting variances regarding certain off-street parking requirements and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero seven-seven Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit in the R eight zoning district. Variance is five-four-one Lafayette Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district on the property known as five-four-one Lafayette Avenue, block zero-four-one-four, lot zero-six-two, as outlined and read on the accompanying plot. Granting variances regarding certain bulk regulations, lot size area, and off-street parking requirements and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor Blanchard.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero seven-eight Closing, Portions of Certain Streets and Alley's Bounded by Riggs Avenue, North Pacon Street, and the land of National Railroad Passenger Company Amtrak. For the purpose of condemning and closing portions of certain streets and alleys bounded by Riggs Avenue, North Pacon Street, and the land of the National Railroad Passenger Corporation, Amtrak, is shown on a plot number three-one-six C-five series for Group A prepared by the survey section and filed with the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsors Bullock on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero seven-nine Sale of Property Certain Streets Lying Within the Area Bounded by Riggs Avenue, North Pacon Street, West Lafayette Avenue, and the land of National Railroad Passenger Corporation, Amtrak. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell either at public or private sale all its interests in certain parcels of land known as portions of certain streets lying within the area bounded by Riggs Avenue, North Pacon Street, West Lafayette Avenue, and the land of National Railroad Passenger Corporation, Amtrak, as shown on plot three-sixteen C-five Group A and filed with the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Councilmember Bullock on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We will now move on to resolutions of the city council. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash zero zero two-eight R Honoring World Refugee Day. For the purpose of honoring World Refugee Day and celebrating the strength, courage, and contributions of Baltimoreans who have escaped conflict or persecution and have chosen to make Baltimore their home. Lead sponsor Parker, co-sponsors Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm issuing this resolution with the city council today to recognize June twentieth as World Refugee Day here in Baltimore City. This resolution recognizes the contributions of refugee communities to both the history and culture of our city and to the vibrancy of our city's diverse neighborhoods. According to the Maryland Office of Refugees and Asylees, over ten thousand families were resettled in Maryland in recent years, while at least fifteen hundred are resettled in the city from countries including Afghanistan, Guatemala, Syria, the Democratic Republic of the Congo, Haiti, and many more. The hope is this resolution recognizes not just a one-time day to honor that, but a commitment from the city to to creating a safe space and a welcoming atmosphere for people who come to this country seeking safety and opportunity and new beginnings, a place to raise their families, to start businesses, to to live freely in the fullness of their identities and to take care of themselves and achieve their dreams. Our community, our creation in Highland Town, has been directly involved in refugee resettlement. We operate a home that houses, that housed a Guatemalan family for a year and a half and now houses a family from South Sudan. That opportunity to work directly with folks and to help organize neighbors, to welcome them, to help them navigate the school system and public transportation and the healthcare system and to get their IDs and social security numbers, all, everything that it takes to help a family get established here. And to see the determination, the success, the determination to joining the community and creating a home for themselves here is really exciting and encouraging. So really grateful to be able to recognize that work that happens family by family across the city. And especially at a time when refugee resettlement has been effectively halted by the Trump administration. The Trump administration blocked all refugees except for those who don't even really meet the international standard refugees, those coming from South Africa claiming racial persecution there. And so especially at a time in which this presidential administration has made a mockery of what it means to be a refugee and has shut the doors of this country to those who have a legal right to seek residency and to seek safety here in this place. I'm grateful for the opportunity to celebrate and to recognize refugees who have resettled here and found a new opportunity in a home among us and to call us to that better and deeper commitment that we have to stand alongside vulnerable neighbors around the world and make make space for them in this country and the city. Thank you.
Councilmember, do you want to move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption?
I indeed would like to move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended.
Move the adoption, this resolution for adoption.
The clerk will call the roll.
Parker. McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
Aye. This motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. The consent calendar was sent to members' inboxes in the Desk Documents folder. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries and the consent calendar is approved. We now move to bills on second reader. Chair recognizes Councilmember Dorsey.
Mr. President, I move that we read short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Without objection, we will proceed with reading short titles. Hearing and seeing none, we will proceed with reading short titles. All bills on second reader tonight come from the Labor and Workforce Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero four-two Retirement Savings Plan Clarifying Amendment.
Chair recognizes Chair Jones.
This bill was heard on June eleventh and it was recommended as favorable. I recommend that this bill move favorably.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero four-three Employees Retirement System Class C Filing Period Amendment.
Chair recognizes Chair Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard also on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. It was recommended as favorable. But, Mr. President, at this time, I move to recommit this bill back to the committee for additional amendments.
Without objection, this bill will be recommitted to the committee. This bill will be recommitted to the committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero four-four Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees Membership and Qualifications.
The chair recognizes Chair Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. It was recommended as favorable. I recommend that this bill moves favorably.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. We now move to the first bill on third reader. Madam Clerk, please read the bill and call the roll.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero zero-three Historic Preservation Conservation Districts Establishment. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved, and I want to thank the sponsor for his diligent work on this. He started it in the last term. He carried it all the way through, kept it going, began on fire this term, made sure it happened. I also want to thank the man that just sneezed, Chairman Torrance, for shepherding this bill through as well. This is an important step for our city in expanding how we think about historic preservation in Baltimore. So I appreciate your good work. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero zero-five Arson Offender Registry Registration Requirement. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero three-eight City Property Naming the Playground Located at Senator Troy Braley Easterwood Park to be the Margaret L. Powell Playground. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved. A reminder, as we move into budget bills, that members may explain their vote after the vote is completed and that you will have up to five minutes to do so. Madam Clerk. Apologies, we will circle back to the budget. There was, sorry, to the ordinance of estimates, there was a typo and Mr. Guthorn is printing an updated copy.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero six-one Annual Property Tax Fiscal Year Twenty twenty-six. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill, Councilman, this bill is approved. Councilman Schleifer, do you wish to explain your vote? Okay.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero seven-five Operating Budget for the Baltimore City School Board of Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved. We will need to recess for one quick minute to address a typo within a bill. Stay with us, please. The, for one minute. We are now back in session. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero six-zero Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilman Schleifer, did you want to indicate that you were a no on?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Councilman Schleifer, please note Councilman Schleifer is a no. Please also note Councilman Conway as a no. This bill is approved by a vote of thirteen to two. Our city council worked closely together to negotiate a budget that secured more funding for public safety, invested in improving accountability by funding an additional position in the IG's office, increased funding for our immigrant communities, a zero-waste pilot, and powerful new support for homeownership programs like Buy Back the Block. We were able to produce a budget that invests in Baltimoreans of every background and age and secured critical commitments that will fund libraries, parks, playgrounds, and pools in the neighborhoods throughout the city. Most importantly for me, we were able to secure a commitment from the administration during a budget hearing to work with us to evaluate our financial practices, to reduce budget overruns that lead to supplemental appropriations. Fiscal stewardship is extremely important to this council and our residents deserve to know that when we pass the budget, that's it. I'd like to take a moment to thank each member of this council for their hard work and commitment throughout this process. I want to extend gratitude to Councilman Mark Parker, who has been at the forefront forefront of the fight for our immigrant neighbors. I'll circle back to Chair McCray in a moment. Shout out to Councilman Dorsey for his leadership in solving major issues within our Department of Transportation and for being the wonky friend we all need. Shout out to Councilman Conway for his staunch commitment to ensure the budget reflects the city's public safety standards. I want to thank Councilman Schleifer for advocating for the economically vulnerable, including small businesses and sanitation workers of our city. I want to give another shout out to our Vice President, Councilmember Sharon Green-Milton, for her steadfast leadership and mentorship of so many of us in this chamber, myself included. And to Councilman Torrance, we thank you for always pushing us to fight for returning citizens and all marginalized people. Thank you to Councilman Gray, who set the tone with a one-hundred percent attendance record during these hearings and for stepping in through chair repeatedly. Your questions were incredibly sharp. Your leadership did not go unnoticed. Thank you to Councilman Bullock for his consistent advocacy toward an equitable and sustainable education system throughout Baltimore and for being our resident professor. By the way, congrats on that conservation bill. Let's give a shout out to Councilwoman Porter for putting in the work to pass the Child Health Equity Act. The health of our children is a key priority for this city council. That is a big deal and congrats for throwing out what looked to be a really good pitch at the Orioles game. I want to thank Councilmember Blanchard for his focus on supporting homeownership through Buy Back the Block and for proving that we can fight for our neighborhoods and downtown. And the Councilman from the eleventh gets a perfect attendance award, too. Thanks to Councilman Jones for his steadfast advocacy and leadership for Baltimore's labor force. We genuinely, we genuinely appreciate you for standing up for working-class citizens and ensuring they are represented. Thank you to Councilman Glover, who has led the council in rectifying the unsafe practices in the Department of Public Works. Thanks to your advocacy, we will not give up the fight until these workers have the pay they deserve. Thank you to Councilwoman Ramos for fighting tooth and nail for all of our neighbors and for your steadfast leadership to, in securing commitments around zero waste. Most importantly, though, game ball goes to Chair McCray for modeling leadership, grace, and grit during this budget season. This was Chair McCray's first year as budget chair. She operated with a high degree of integrity, fought like heck for every member of this council. Let's all give a very special thank you to the councilwoman from the second district. If I throw it, are you going to catch it? No? All right, my staff is advising me not to do that. Wait, wait, wait. Come on. The old playing day. Try that one more time. It's harder to do in a suit, y'all, I'm telling you. Not like my old playing days. I want to thank Mayor Scott's team for collaborating with our council to finalize this budget and move our city forward. Thank you to Nancy Mead and all of the staff of Council Services, who staffed six long days of hearings and made everything run extremely smoothly while onboarding two new staff, all while making sure we never ran out of snacks. Thank you, too. I appreciate you, Marguerite, and Roma and everyone. Thank you, too, my staff, especially my legislative director, Shamoya Gardner, who stood side by side with Chair McCray in the negotiations with the administration. Appreciate you. Thanks to Dexter for crunching them numbers. Thank you to all the staff from our member offices, who I saw providing consistently excellent support to our fourteen members throughout this process while also keeping up with constituent services and many other responsibilities. Finally, thank you to the committee, I'm sorry. Finally, thank you to the community members who showed up and advocated in this process. This is your budget, and I'm proud that it reflects the feedback that we heard at taxpayers' night and throughout our hearings. Your voice and your priorities are at the heart of this work, and we do this work for you. Other folks who would like to be recognized on this budget before we go on to committee announcements. Madam VP.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to take a moment to share my feelings about Councilwoman McCray. It brings me great joy to be your colleague and a member of this year's budget committee. I recognize you are a strong woman and passionate advocate for Baltimore City. During this budget season, I not only saw your strength and backbone, but also had the privilege of witnessing your resilience. Even when challenges arose, you remained steadfast, refusing to let distractions, unfair ones if that, deter you from your mission. For this, you truly deserve heartfelt recognition and a round of applause for guiding us through this challenging seizing, season with such great grace. And I thank you, and I'm sure that's also similar sentiments with our, my colleagues. So thank you, another round of applause.
Thank you, Madam VP. Anybody else? Councilman Gray?
Yeah, I just want to second that. As someone who is a freshman here and sitting on this committee, I couldn't have had a better chair than Danny, who, one, she's really smart, really dedicated, knows her stuff, and low-key is really hilarious. So thank you for all the laughs, but also for giving me a chance to fill in at moments and making me feel a part of this process. So I definitely appreciate your leadership. I may be biased, but I think you are the best chair of budget that we've had, and I'm only saying this from experience. So, but just thank you for everything that you do and just for always standing up for what's right and having, you know, the guts and the backbone to just be there for us. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to say nice things about Chair Danny McCray? I'm seeing Torrance, go ahead.
I'll try to make this quick. I just want to thank Chairwoman McCray for just putting her personal stamp on this process. As someone who sat through multiple hearings prior to this, we saw a new process. It worked even smoother, and I'm just proud that you made it your own.
Uh, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hate the budget process so much. I just, I love it. I hate it from beginning to end. I can't state that enough. But I love our chair, and I have been, this is my ninth time through this miserable process. And if it's possible to hate it just like slightly less, then that's attributable to our chair making me feel like I'm a human being in this process and that I represent other human beings in this city and their interests in a way that I have not felt in eight years on this council prior. And so I'm just thankful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. Madam Chair, any words you want to share? Chair McCray?
I have no clue why you gave me this ball. Because I'm, I'm just not going to put it down. I want to thank you all. First, I'm going to start with our council president. I want to thank you for your leadership. I want to thank your entire team who supported us throughout this entire process. Jose, I see your face first, so I'm going to say we are thanking Jose because obviously he's an integral part of the, of coordinating our favorite parts of the day is what I'll say, and it's kind of, if you know, you know. But thank you, Jose. I want to, again, obviously thank your entire team, but definitely your legislative director, Shamoya, for everything that you've done to support us this, this session. Definitely want to go to our entire Council Services team. Obviously Director Nancy, we do not get this done without Council Services. It just does not happen. So I want to thank my forever staffer, Marguerite Karen. I want to thank Tony. I want to thank Peroma. I want to thank Julianne. Everyone who supported us. I want to thank, and a lot of these folks have been thanked, but I want to thank them again. Every staff member, every staff member for the support that they provided, checking up on us, making sure we had gummy bears, all types of stuff, the research that we needed, the questions that we needed, everything to just make this flow smoothly. I also want to thank Mayor Scott and his entire team. I want to thank Mayor Scott for his willingness from day one to work with the city council on this budget. Obviously, our CAO, our fearless CAO, Faith Leach, as well as the Chief of Staff, Calvin Young, from his team. There are many others on his team who helped out, but we thank you and we appreciate you for your work on this budget. Um, we, I also want to thank our BBMR team, Director Laura Lawson and her entire team for their work. I want to thank every single council member. And you said it, for the, for the personal stamp that they put on this budget for fighting for what Baltimoreans deserve. Every single one of you within this process, we are so grateful. And last, I just want to thank those young people, our young kids, students, who came on taxpayers' night to testify about what was important to to testify about what was important to them. And I hope in the future that we see a lot more of our students, um, and every resident coming before us to let us know what matters to them. Um, thanks everyone again for being a part of this process. And I don't know if this is my basketball, but I'm going to take it. So thanks for, thanks for this. It's the perfect color.
And now, committee assignments. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. Budget and appropriations, Chair McCray. Great. Education, youth, and older adults, Chair Bullock.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, the Education, Youth, and Older Adults Committee will be hearing Bill Number Two-Five-Zero-Zero-Two-Seven-R uh, on, uh, July twenty-fourth at twelve P M. That is for informational hearing for home repair assistance for older adults. Uh, and that was for the purpose of inviting the Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development, Office of the Mayor's, uh, Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the Mayor's Office of Older Adults and Affairs and Advocacy, and relevant stakeholders to provide update on city council to the status of home repair assistance programs for older adults in the city at the direction of Councilmember Ramos. It's an excellent, uh, topic, so look forward to discussion again on the twenty-fourth of, uh, July at twelve P M. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Housing and Economic Development, Chair Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Economic Development Committee will be hearing City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Zero-Zero-Three-R. This is our quarterly hearing on informational hearing for permits, and that will be held in the city council chambers on July twenty-second at four-thirty P M.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Labor and Workforce, Chair Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Labor and Workforce Committee will be hearing Bill Two-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Four-Three uh, Employees Retirement System Class C Filing Period Amendment, uh, on July ninth, two P M at the council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Land Use and Transportation, Chair Dorsey.
Mr. President, I have, I don't have any new announcements. Uh, just as a reminder, though, the Land Use and Transportation Committee is meeting at nine A M, not ten A M, nine A M on, uh, June twenty-sixth to hear about a dozen, uh, land use bills. Um, one was added by an administrative memo. I mean, it's, you know, ten or eleven different bills at this point. Um, so, uh, we want to start promptly in, in order to get through all of that, um, in the allotted time. Um, there was also an administrative memo announcing, um, oversight hearings on, uh, July tenth and seventeenth to follow up on previously held hearings from March and April, uh, which would be on the subject of, um, parking enforcement and street lighting operations. Um, and then for the, and those will be at ten A M. Um, and for committee members, we're doing a prep meeting with DOT this Friday. And I'd meant to send out an email, but I thought I'd just mention here while it's on my mind. Uh, prep meeting with DOT staff, uh, this Friday at nine-thirty A M. Uh, it'd be an in-person meeting, and, uh, if, uh, a couple of committee members want to participate in that, um, we can still do that. We just can't have a quorum. Thank you.
Much appreciated. Uh, Legislative Investigations, Chairman Schleifer. No announcements. Public Health and the Environment, Chair Porter.
Mr. President, um, we finally received the stamp of approval from our amazing city solicitor, um, to schedule these hearings. So I'm going to read a series of, uh, legislative oversight hearings related to, um, the opioid crisis from my committee. The Public Health and Environment Committee, um, will be holding a legislative oversight hearing Wednesday, July ninth at ten A M. Um, the city's response to the opioid crisis for the purpose to provide a platform for city agencies, health providers, community advocates to discuss ongoing challenges to identify service gaps, explore policy solutions to enhance Baltimore's collective response to opioid addiction and overdose prevention. On Wednesday, July sixteenth, there's another legislative oversight hearing at ten A M. Um, in collaboration with Chairman Bullock, uh, we will have an oversight hearing related to the opioid restitution funds for the purpose of assessing the allocation and impact of the opioid restitution funds, ensuring that they are utilized effectively to support evidence-based strategies that benefits the city's most vulnerable populations. The next one will be held Wednesday, July twenty-third at ten A M in collaboration with Chairman, Chairman Torrance, Understanding Psychiatric Rehabilitation Programs in Baltimore City for the purpose of examining the accessibility, effectiveness, and regulatory oversight of PRP services in collaboration with the state of Maryland, ensuring that they align with community needs and best practices in mental and behavioral health care. The discussion will focus on improving the coordination, accountability, and equitable service delivery. And last, but certainly not least, on Wedn, oh, I got two more, sorry, y'all. Wednesday, July thirtieth at ten A M in collaboration with Vice President Sharon Green Middleton will have a legislative oversight hearing related to recovery homes and substance abuse clinics in Baltimore City for the purpose of ensuring that individuals in recovery have an access to high-quality, safe, and well-regulated recovery homes and substance abuse clinics to evaluate existing policies, ask, ex, excess, provide our accountability, and explore opportunities to enhance support systems for individuals in recovery in collaboration with the state of Maryland. This sovereign, this discussion will prioritize community concerns, patient safety, and equitable distribution of recovery resources across the city. And last, but certainly not least, we'll have a legislative oversight hearing on Wednesday, September tenth at ten A M. Um, this is a part of our quarterly behavioral health series at the, um, at the recommendation of the council president. And we'll explore, we'll explore and respond to increasing behavioral health challenges, including the Baltimore City Health Department staff, database evaluation and reporting, and alignment on city-funded and non-city-funded entities and the visibility of pro behavioral health efforts. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Public Safety, Chair Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the Public Safety Committee, uh, is going to be moving the hearing for LO Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Zero-Five. And this is for our legislative oversight hearing on crime reduction and violence prevention. Uh, it was originally scheduled for July eighth. We're going to be moving it to September twenty-third during our regular scheduled time at one P M in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to regular announcements. Members, please wait to be recognized to make any regular announcements. Any regular announcements? Uh, Councilman Torrance.
So my staff does not kill me. We are having the annual Gwen Falls cleanup on June twenty-eighth at ten A M. We welcome everyone to come out. We are cleaning from Drew Hill Park to, um, to Lincoln Park.
Thank you, sir. Other regular announcements? Alright. Two nights district spotlight comes from Councilmember Jones of the twelfth district. Councilmember, the floor is yours. That's okay. Uh, we will hold on this district spotlight and come back to you in the next council meeting, if that's alright with you. They, they, they can't, they can't all be Tony Glover. We'll come back. Uh, thank you, council members. The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, June thirtieth at five P M. There being no further business, this concludes the eleventh regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council.